Good evening, everyone. This is the Board of Finance Special Meeting of April 12th, 2021. The time is now 6:31 PM. We have a very simple agenda this evening where we are just going to be discussing new business, which includes budget presentations from 13 different departments on the general government side of the budget this evening. So with 13 departments, I imagine some will go very quickly and some perhaps may take upwards of 15 or 20 minutes with questioning. So I do anticipate this to be a long meeting, probably until 9:00. So we'll go a couple of hours and then if we need a five-minute break, you can let me know. I'll certainly call for a break. So with that, we're going to jump right into new business. And the first department on our list this evening is Department 109, Information Technology. So we have Joe Brugga here, as well as Carmen Ames. I think Joe is going to run us through the budget.
Correct. Just quickly, where we were at last year is we were billing this year as a bridge year. We weren't exactly sure what the IT needs, as everyone was aware. I did a PowerPoint presentation last year. It seemed at the time the emergency services weren't getting exactly all the IT support that they needed, just because of the way we were set up. So we created additional money in Star's contract. And we had the Eastline Ambulances Association, which Dave Baer is on here now as the president, contribute the money that they normally paid directly to Star to the town so that we basically centralized the whole IT budget. So, you know, part of my presentation would just kind of tell how we're doing it. So I'll just go through the items. On, I'm gonna, I have a, in your presentation, or in your package, I do have a detailed line items breakdowns when we get, starting with the licensing and hosting. But the line items before that, information technology, personal services, we only have one employee, Carmen Ames, she's on this call here, who pretty much kind of oversees all the different things that we need her to do. She's been doing a great job of that. Line, and 200 services, copier maintenance, there is a slight increase. And the reason we are going from 14 to 15,5 is with the move to the public safety building, we just wanted to make sure we covered an extra copy machine that they were going to be looking for in that building. That gives us that ability to have that. I'm going to share my screen with all the other line items, just so we can kind of follow You can see here, the other line items now, we get into licensing and hosting is the next one, 216. It's being proposed 3,000 more. Essentially, you know, most of the lines are pretty close. I do have this extra amount. When you put together a budget, especially with this much stuff going in, we have it right to the penny. And like I say, for instance, when I put this together, now we're having some additional antivirus costs, because we have extra computers even on top of what we have here. So the 2875 gives a little more buffer for any IT needs that come up. You have to still run the town as far as all the IT needs. And we did cut back the miscellaneous line in Carmen's budget a few years ago. It used to be 5,200, now they're 2,500, so this kind of makes up for that extra amount there. Technical assistance is still the same, but I'll get into that breakdown in a further line. Other IT services is the same as it was this past year, as was GS, GS annual licensing and hosting. That's to run our GS system, all the licensing and all that. I talked to Gary Geishold, the planning director, and there's definitely a need for the continued development. We're trying to keep that to 2,500, because the GS is such a helpful enterprise system for all the different departments. So no changes in those lines. The biggest line that has changed, and that's why I kind of want to get into this detailed breakdown, is what's going in. And I call it the Police EMD Fire Marshal Office IT Support Line. If you can see from the adopted budget, the bottom, it's 106,275, and jumps up to 165. So anytime you have any kind of jump like that, and also a percentage jump, you need to have some explanation. So every penny is accounted for here. Let me just kind of break it down. MDT's, and if I misspeak, the chief or anyone else on the police side could jump in. MDT's is going away. That contract is going to be included with Next Gen. The reporting system IMC is going away, so those are negatives. That's good. But the Next Gen is, this is the, these are the costs of support for the new reporting system that the chief gave me, 17,880. And then the Crown Castle is, I believe, the fiber. So the big line item here goes from 4,032 is, we used to have a support contract with Panasonic, I think it was, oh yeah, it's right there, 4,000. That's jumping up to 32. And it's not just car cameras now, it's all the body cameras. And this board, I believe, was authorized the expenditure for the body cameras and was made aware that that service contract was going to have a cost to it. So there it shows up, is that, just that line there, is an increase of 28,000. I know there's some deducts, but everything is kind of included there. The scheduling software, this is again the police one, is what the chief gave me as far as the cost. The policy software, there was an increase in that. Booking camera, they wanted, 400. Then here we go, again, the 2,000, 4,000 is just a little bit of buffer when they move into the building, just whatever IT needs that they have in that building, you gotta, if you don't know everything that's going to happen, to have a little bit of flexibility of something that is needed. The PDE mail system, they are getting more emails, so that's why these buffers are a little good, because, you know, they now need emails for all their dispatchers, and that's, that'll have a little more cost to it. So that should be absorbed with what we have here. And then Emergency Management Departments, which the chief is also overseeing, they gave me these lines for computer software, hardware, miscellaneous hardware expenses. Then this line here is what Mr. Way gave me from the Fire Marshal's Office of miscellaneous IT needs they have. And the biggest nut in here is, so what I'm pitching this year is, last year, in this current fiscal year, we were pitching a bridge year, well, I'm proposing a bridge year too, because we don't know exactly the date that we're moving into the public safety building, and we don't know exactly what the needs are once we get there, as far as if they're going to change any. So far, the system of this bridge is working. STAR has been a huge component, because they know the dispatch system, they know the police system, they've been working well with the town. So it's like, if it's not broken, why, you know, why change it this year? So we're just proposing, now, the one thing that's going on, or why this is jumping from 52, 50,000 to 72, the additional monies is right here. STAR has been billing us $81.88 for the last five, six years. That's extremely below market rate. They cannot continue to do that. I did get pricing from another town, and their rates average between 140 to 170 dollars an hour. And we've been getting it at 81, 88. STAR is coming up on their price to $100 an hour, which is still well below market. But to get the same number of hours, which I have in the spreadsheet, 1,174 hours, it has to bump up the actual amount that we're kicking in, and that's why this went up $22,000. There was a slight increase in the on-call, so we pay STAR to be on-call 24/7. So if someone, if the dispatch has a problem at 1:00 in the morning on a Sunday, they, there's someone at STAR with the phone, ready to get that call to fix it. That comes at a cost of town. This should be no surprise, because this is what we did this past year, and I told the committee, the board this last year. There's a slight increase, because even though STAR is paying these people to be on-call, it's kind of hard to find people to be on-call for Christmas and Thanksgiving and some of that. So we had to bump up the pay to some of these people on holidays. So that's why there's a slight increase there. So basically, this breaks down how the STAR contract works. This quarterly payment's not necessarily, it's something, it's just how we pay STAR. We pay them in four quarterly payments. But we only pay STAR for the hours. It's like an attorney. We pay them a retainer, and then we, whenever we get, every month, they send me an update of how many hours they used. And that contract is broken up by, if we need 138,000 this year, 22,750 is coming from that town IT support line. 82 is coming from the emergency services support. And the Eastline Ambulance contribution at this time is showing still reimbursing the town, and they pay the town, and then that line gets credited 33,492. So that's basically the IT budget, you know, every single item that we have in there. And if I can answer any questions, I'd certainly like to do that.
Okay, thank you, Joe, for the presentation. I'd like to turn it over to the board for questions. And what I'd actually like to do is go in alphabetical order, so that we can keep things rolling, and everybody knows when they can expect to speak or ask a question, if that pleases the board. Does that make sense? So, if that makes sense.
I have one.
Yes, Joe?
Camille, I have one question, just so I don't get in trouble. I'm supposed to, after this, talk about the capital items for IT. So after the questions on the operating budget, I was supposed to bring up the capital, so I just didn't want to forget that.
Okay, very good. So we do have a note that says the department heads will talk about the IT portion of the budget. I just wasn't sure if that was going to be all at the end, or after individual departments. Thanks for pointing that out.
I mean, I could do, I could do, I could do it right now, if you want.
No, let's get through the, let's get through the operation, let's get through the operational budget first. And let's start our questioning with John Burmey, please.
My questions were resolved by Joe just a minute ago, when he went through the last two pages of the report, itemization of every thing that was spent in that budget. So I'm good for now.
Okay, so if there's no questions, let's move on to Anne Chakel.
Hi, Joe. The other thing I was going to say, Camille, is it might be good if after each person presents, they do the capital, just that way, then they don't have to wait until the end. Do you know what I mean, for the people presenting? Just to make it easier for them.
Right, so we'll let Joe speak to his capital budget after we get done with our operational budget questions?
Yeah, just so then, you know, people don't have to stay for the entire, entire meeting. Okay, so my question, Joe, is, I guess I'm a little confused on the STAR contract. Do you just pay for what, for the services that they give? You said you have a certain amount. So is that when, like, people have problems, that they call STAR, or they're, you know, having issues with their computers?
Right, correct. They, we like to have department heads, or, you know, someone sign off, so just not everyone's calling STAR. But say the police department, the police department has something going on, well, then they call, you know, a computer's not working, whatever, the network's down. If it's anything having to do with dispatch, it has to be corrected right away. So the way up to the year eight, 43% of that contract has been used by dispatch, the ambulances, the Flanders fire, and the Nynek fire. And 32% of that contract has been used by PD, EM, emergency management, the Fire Marshal's Office, and 25% of that contract has been used by general government.
Okay, so my other question is this, I can't remember from last year, I remember your presentation, but is, do they, are they on all the same computer system now, or are they different ones, and that's what you're waiting to try to figure out how to get it all together? Do you know what I mean?
Are you talking, the police, you mean?
Well, the police, the dispatch, the government, are they all on different computer systems, or have they all been brought together at this point, or are they under the same umbrella?
Well, their main, their main system is the reporting system. And when they were in the existing building, they were on IMC. It's my understanding that they're changing to Next Gen. And I don't know if the chief wants to chime in on that, but we don't get too involved in exactly, obviously, the PD has to use the system they need. So he, Chief Finkelstein probably can comment on that question.
And it's, you know, for an explanation, it's not really just a system. It's unlike an office environment, where the connectivity we have on different networks, different platforms, different state, federal platforms, the report writing, everything has to be kind of integrated together, so there isn't a single system, which is really what drives most of our need. Let's take dispatch, for example. In dispatch, we may have a problem where the interface in a 911 may go down in the middle of the night. That requires immediate attention from STAR or another vendor. If the MDT's, which are out in the field for the police officers, are not getting the data out there because of a modem or connectivity or network problem, that needs to be addressed. So there isn't single platforms. So that's why it's crucial, really, for us to have somebody with knowledge of the system, i.e. in this case STAR, or if we ever ventured into having our own tech person, who really could quarterback all those systems, have knowledge under their belt of how to manage each of those. Because, you know, we'll say, the number of systems that we have and the amount of work that we as law enforcement, emergency services have, that are IT-based, are, you know, far more than not. And we are so dependent on those, and they're very volatile, fragile systems. And each of them, you know, could have a significant impact on how we do our jobs. So they all really need to be kept up, running all the time. And, you know, one of the big changes, if you remember back, why we made this change, was we didn't have 24/7 coverage from STAR. So, and we do prioritize, and I just want to make sure you point that out. I think that leads to, you know, why we are under the expenditure so far. If a desktop in the police department goes down on the weekend, we're not having STAR come in to fix that. They're coming in to fix crucial systems, you know, the dispatch systems, the systems that get paging out to the fire departments, the systems that populate the MDT's that officers have in the fields. And moving forward, with the body camera systems and all of that, you know, there are going to be very intricate things that need to be, you know, maintained and have to be done on a 24/7 basis.
So when STAR comes in, do they, can they do it remotely, or do they have to come in person?
A large amount of what they do is, they do have remote access and capabilities. Unfortunately, some of the systems, because they are on criminal justice systems, the federal government, you know, you can't have internet access into the criminal justice database for them. So they can't remote into something that was related to that portion of the system. So they would have to come in and go, you know, live onsite to do. But again, they make every effort to, the attempt to do it remote, if it's a system, they know that they have the possibility of doing that.
Okay, thank you.
And as part of our contract with them, after hours, if STAR remotes in, it's a minimum one hour. If they have to go onsite, it's a minimum four hours. So they keep the coming onsite to the bare minimum, and they can, they seem to be addressing most everything remotely, except for the things that Chief Finkelstein was talking about.
So if they come onsite, the charge is a minimum of four hours, is what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay, got it. Yeah, I don't have any other questions. I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Anne. Pete DeRosa, do you have any questions on the IT budget?
With help if I unmuted myself. You talked about the hourly rate for STAR going from $82 to $100 an hour, and you were comparing that against other towns that had a higher hourly rate that they were paying. Were those contracts with other vendors, or were they with STAR? I mean, it sounds like you've got a pretty good deal going on here.
They were, they're with other vendors. I don't know what other towns use STAR, if any, but STAR is located on Blackpoint Road.
Right, right.
And the owner of STAR is an Eastline grad, and he's a very, very intelligent guy, has a great staff, so. But yeah, the comparable rates I gave you were for other vendors that might be in the Hartford area or the Haven area.
So we're going to discourage STAR from getting a brand-new shiny building and raising their rates, right?
Except if the assessor assesses the fancy building at more money, then that would be good.
All right, but thank you. So it's, yeah, I know that STAR is local, and that we've used them a lot, and it's good. And it sounds like you're doing a great job with the rates there, so appreciate that. Thank you. That's all I have, Camille.
Okay, thanks. Anne Santoro, do you have any questions?
Yeah, just one, Joe, and to all, Joe, and everyone that contributed to this, to this presentation, very detailed, thanks for all the information. Just had a question on line 214, the copier maintenance. From the narrative, it seems that all the copiers are leased. Is that correct, Joe?
Yes, that's correct.
So there's no ownership at all? Okay, okay.
No, they're all, they're all leased. They were, we were, Carmen and Bill Shear renegotiated the lease, I believe, a year ago, and got a much better rate. So that was a savings to town. This line used to be 17,000, and now it's 14 this year, and we're raising it to 15,500. So we definitely go out for competitive bids on that, and we got a very favorable lease.
Good, okay, that, well, you answered my next couple of questions, so that's great. And then just, my other question is just, you've mentioned that we've had, have had, and are going to have, bridge years. We had a bridge year this past year, we'll have another bridge year with respect to IT. So can you just summarize quickly the long game, you know, once we're out of Bridgeland, how would you like to see it look? And what can we anticipate?
Ironically, I would like to see it work if there's an IT director, and that's not me, because I'm not an IT person, per se, but it's just, and I don't know of a public works director that has IT. But yet, I think the town really needs an IT director now. Whether you can, we've already had discussions with the Board of Ed, whether we can have one person that kind of is a guru for the Board of Ed into town that can, because someone has to be looking at this stuff from a 10,000-foot level, of where are we going with IT in this town? And it's very challenging for us to do that, when we're just making sure that everything's going on, and the roads are being done, and everything else. Oh, by the way, so IT, okay. So my goal is that there's an IT director. But we're actually moving our way towards that, because we're building up enough money in the STAR account, that ultimately, the thing to do is have an IT director. We're probably going to still have to have someone boots on the ground at the police station, and those people would be working in conjunction, is how that all works. But we definitely need another person on staff. What that would do is drop STAR's contract down significantly for just the extras, or if we go out to bid with that, or if we use the same vendor as the Board of Ed. But we didn't want to go there right now, because we have such a critical transition with the dispatch to be using the Board of Ed's contractor that doesn't really know anything about our system, especially with emergency services.
Yeah, well, I agree with that. Well, thanks, Joe, thanks. That's all I have for now. Thanks a lot.
Thanks, Anne. And that brings us to Rich Steele. If you have any questions, Rich, for the IT folks.
Thank you. Thanks for the very detailed presentation and the explanation. It's good to have the cognition that we are still in a bridge year moving forward. And when we approved the body cameras, this was detailed back then. So I don't have any further questions at this time. I think it's a good point that you bring up, Joe, that the end game would be to bring it internal, to have a guru to kind of oversee it all. But at this point, where we're sort of at the point of putting out fires with the needs that we have, I think it's a good place to use service providers. And it sounds like you've got a very good rate. So thank you.
Hey, thanks, Rich. I have no questions for you. So, Joe, if you'd like to move on to your capital budget, to the Board of Finance members, I believe, in this week's packet, Anna had included a CIP chart. So if you need to follow along, that's where it would have been. Did everyone see that and receive it? Okay, great. All right, Joe, capital.
So you guys have Anna's capital plan, is that what you guys have in front of you?
Yeah, she was referring to the capital. I think we're looking at the capital budget tonight, which is...
Okay, yeah, because I had, I had a plan for the proposed capital budget, I think it's Department 724.
724's budget, yeah.
Okay, so there's a few items in this. The first one is CAD software and survey equipment. There's a balance of $8,840 in it, and we're requesting 4,000. What this, what we're coming up on is, our plotter's about seven years old, and it's limping along. All the departments in Town Hall are always using our large format. Plotter, it's about $10,000, $11,000 to replace. So this money in the CNRE would build up, so that we could purchase that this year. And then, in each successive years, we keep putting money in the CNRE to buy survey equipment. Our staff is fantastic. Bill Shear is a licensed land surveyor. We, they do everything in-house, but they need the equipment to do it. So that's what that line is, the 4,000. The other one in the CNRE is town-wide servers, 5,000. The balance of that is 17,748, as you recall, is about four years ago. We had, the servers crashed in Town Hall. So at that time, it was wisely thought to put some money in the CNRE, so that when they're coming up again, well, they're coming up again, I talked to Carmen today, that, just to verify, but we're going to need to replace some servers in the coming year. So with that money, we'd have 20, almost $23,000 in it, and we could start replacing some of the servers, so we don't get in a situation that we did a few years ago. And also, town-wide computer equipment, we have technology upgrade, 10,000. Every year, we have this 10,000, and we're appreciative that we can have this money, so that we can keep changing our computers. The cycle of computers in town are anywhere from five to seven years. We try to get into seven, but in computer years, that's a lot. So we have to look at them. Carmen has a running list of all the ones, and typically, the $10,000 will get us about 12, 13 computers, that we decide which ones have to be strategically put in place. And then she gets the computers and changes them out. So that's kind of a thing that has to continue, or else we're going to get extremely outdated, and it's really going to affect performance of our staff. So those are the items, I think, in IT with regards to capital, if there's any question.
I'll just open this up to, does anyone have any questions regarding the capital budget for IT?
Joe, do you want to talk about the public works trucks?
We're in that, we're in the information technology budget now.
I'm on, I'm on, on Wednesday market, public works, and I'll talk about it then, I'm assuming.
So, does anybody have questions regarding the two capital items that Joe discussed for information technology? Okay, seeing no hands, we'll be moving on then. Thank you, Joe. With that, I'd like to move on to Department 214, Emergency Management. Is that Chief Finkelstein?
How are you? No, I didn't make sure I wasn't muted. I do that all the time. Thank you very much for having us. Emergency management, as you know, is a, you know, a very lean budget. Historically, it was intertwined with the Fire Marshal's budget, and after Mr. Way was hired as Fire Marshal, there was an untwining of those budgets, and now there are two separate budgets to be presented. Again, for the, our budget is staff-related. It is a stipend for myself. It is paying for Julie Wilson, who is our one full-time staff person. There are activation costs involved. We have multiple activations per year, be millstone events that occur, storm events, so on and so forth. So it pays for the people that we have to have on staff. As a millstone EPZ town, we have to have a radiological officer, that is a person who has knowledge in radiological activities, should we have an activation of our EOC. We have an amazing person in that role. We also have communications people that are involved, too. Inside of this budget, we also have AED supplies. When, several years ago, it was decided that in order to maintain the AEDs that are maintained in town buildings throughout the town, there was no one location that was budgeted to do the pad and battery replacement, so that exists inside of this budget. We also maintain the radio maintenance. Now, it's important to note that radio maintenance is not just for emergency management, that is our entire town. So if it's a radio service for the police, the fire, the ambulance, the public works, the school buses, the senior buses, Parks and Rec now is coming up onboard with a version of a radio system that we've been working on for them. This maintains all of those systems for the entire town of Eastline, so that's what that $30,000 amount is. We certainly, one question is going to be, as we merge departments and go into the same building, the line for building maintenance, for example, and telephones. I foresee, and I'm knocking on wood by saying this, but next year, we probably should see a reduction in those, as we merge three budgets together. However, I think it is premature to try to do a reduction in that today, because we don't know what those costs are going to end up being in fruition when we get into the new building. But I definitely think that merging the three departments in three budgets, actually more than three together, you're going to see, especially the building maintenance part, reduced down there. If there's any questions, please ask. You're muted?
I think this chief department only has one capital item to discuss, so do you just want to talk briefly about that, and then I'll...
So that is microwave links. If you recall back to the conversation that we had, when we talked about the expenditure for the Moskaway Tower, and the addition of that into the radio system... and the addition of that into the radio system. Am I freezing?
You're good.
Okay, right. We talked about microwave links throughout town. There are two links that are in the ballpark of 15 plus years. So that definitely increases the possibility of failure in those communication links. What we're looking to do is preventively look forward and say we need to replace those because we do know that they do have a limited lifespan. So what that cost is, is to replace those two links that go between two of the towers, knowing that on Masta Way, we're gonna have new equipment up there. So it should make our system, you know, much more long lasting and not have any points of failure moving forward. So it's really preventative piece to maintain those communications for all those agencies.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Ann Chikalo.
Just a quick question. What is a transportation allowance? What does that cover?
So that's meetings. So let's say Julie, you know, Julie several times a year has to go up to Norwich to Millstone for different EPZ type meetings. There's other meetings that take place. That pays for the stipend for mileage because she does not have a town vehicle to take.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other questions for the chief on emergency management? Yes, John.
I'm 201 on telephone. I noticed you have two different vendors or service for their phones, Frontier and Verizon. Could you clarify why that?
So Verizon's for cellphone, Verizon cellphone, Frontier is in-building phone systems. Now that Frontier will be changing in the move to the new building. There's gonna be a new upgrade to SIP lines rather than the old copper lines. So we're trying to drastically increase our efficiency and reduce costs. But again, Verizon is for the cellular phone service and Frontier is in-building phone service.
So you still have the both of them when you move?
Yeah, well, it'll change from Frontier to the SIP vendor, which right now, we're utilizing a company out of the central part of the state, but they're gonna be contracting those out. But it's not Frontier.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for the chief this evening on this department? Seeing no questions, I think that we can move on to Department 215, Public Safety Dispatch.
Okay, so when we get to the topic of dispatch, I think we've all had this conversation. And you know, those of you on the Finance Committee have been through this before where we have a constant struggle when it comes to staffing. And I think Mr. Steele pointed out, you know, several months ago in a conversation about, you know, properly budgeting on our part for the overtime versus part timers. So understanding how we do dispatch, just to kind of have a little background. We currently employ six full-time dispatchers in our center. We supplement, we've changed their schedules in the past two years to have them rotating. We have reduced the number of part-time shifts that are planned to five per week because members 24/7/365 coverage. So the problem with part-time work is we have outstanding part-time dispatchers, but they're few, far between. Their availability ebbs and flows. So we are forced at times to pay overtime for full-time dispatchers to be in that chair. So it's understanding in the dispatch role, you need to have somebody there all the time. You can't just say we're not gonna fill the shift today. So it becomes a scheduling nightmare. Lieutenant Jazurski is in charge of that and does an incredible job at doing it. However, it becomes very, very difficult, as she can certainly attest to, to do that schedule and try to do it with who we have. We've unfortunately also been hit with some significant medical issues with some of the dispatchers that have extended, at least currently where we are in this budget. So projecting forward, we would like to try to project a more reasonable budget of what we are actually expending. And we've kind of, we tried something last year with a new schedule to go back to more part-time hours and less overtime. That didn't work itself out because of the availability of part timers. We also have to understand with part timers, we go through a tremendous amount of time and money to train them as dispatchers. And we have no ability to mandate how often they work or if they remain working. We've unfortunately had that happen too many times where we've trained part-time dispatchers. They work for several months and then they decide, well, no, I don't wanna do this. So it's a very, very difficult investment for us to make in a gamble. So you see in this budget, you have a reduction in the part-time dispatch line and an increase in the full-time overtime line to try to really estimate what we're going to be spending and should be spending. I also want to kind of throw out there that we've had the conversation with the Police Commission and the Board of Selectmen that an end goal does need eventually to be to have two dispatchers 24/7 in the dispatch center. Our current schedule gives us seven days a week from 7:00 AM to 11:00 PM, two dispatchers. But seven days a week from 11:00 PM to 7:00 AM, one dispatcher only in the building. So that's certainly an area of vulnerability. If it gets busy, a lot of call volume comes in, multiple calls. It becomes very difficult for that dispatcher to maintain those calls. So ultimately, best practice for the industry is to have two at all times. We know that eventually, we're gonna have to be at that. We should be at that. And that would require the hiring of several more full-time dispatchers. So it's something that I think we, you know, being transparent and honest, we do need to get to that point. That has been discussed with the Police Commission and the Board of Selectmen, who both have verbally said, yes, they want to go in that direction. But certainly, you know, it's a budget impact to do that. Any questions on that portion?
Any questions on the dispatch department 215? Yes, Ann?
Hi, Mike. I was wondering, how much does it cost to train the part-time dispatcher?
Lieutenant Jazurski, do you have, can you give her a rundown on what we do to train?
Yeah, it's about 40 hours. It could be more than that. It could be anywhere between 40 and 60 to 80 hours, depending on how well the part timer is picking it up. And they usually come in at various rates. But right now, it's $19 an hour to start to train.
Okay, thank you.
And also remembering when we're training the part-time dispatchers, you're also paying a full-timer or another part-time to be there with them. So it's, you know, you're still paying somebody else to be sitting there while you're paying that person to train. So it's, you know, it's kind of a double cost in that, that way.
Right. We also have to get them certified through EMD and a state telecommunications class as well, and collect.
Thank you.
Okay.
I have a question. In terms, you know, the overtime, obviously, and you said that, and I understand the difficulty in getting part timers and trying to reduce overtime through part timers and mentioned that several times. You also mentioned that you had some medical challenges that were impacting the overtime. So, and is that impacting this year's budget? Is there a, you know, is that gonna hopefully mitigate over a year or two?
They were, I will say they had impact on, they had impact. They impacted the past two. So, you know, Peter, going forward, I would hope that that wouldn't be an issue. I was just trying to be very transparent to where, why do we stand where we stand with our year-to-date? That has impacted the past two years. And going forward, we have no way of projecting that that's gonna happen again or continue to happen.
Right. No, I understand. You need to be, you know, it's better to know, you know, prepare upfront. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Rich?
Yes, I was wondering if we have trends on the number of calls and are they increasing overtime to dispatch?
Well, I think if you look at the calls for service that took place in 2020, there was a 7% increase. We're 18, 18,000, I think, 655 for calls that came in. So that's certainly, you know, it's a 7% increase over 2019. So calls do not slow down. And as, you know, the Fire and EMS people that are on this call with us can also attest to that, you know, some of these calls come at the same time. There's multiple calls occurring. There's multiple calls for the same incident, you know, at the same time. And they rely heavily on the dispatchers to provide them, not just with, hey, here's your call. They provide services throughout the duration and after that call. So, you know, there's certainly a tremendous amount of work. And then as we transition to the new building, the roles of dispatchers will be ever increased because now that's who you meet when you go into the lobby, for example. So there's certain pieces that they're going to be involved in that only increases the workload, you know, not decreases it.
Okay, thank you very much. And just a recent event in our neighborhood. I am just very, very impressed with the response time that your professionals have with responding to events. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rich. I just have a quick question on the overtime, just to circle back on that. How, how did you come up with the 95,000 figure? Was that based on two years ago?
No, what we, what I did was I extrapolated what we were utilizing. And if that trend were to continue for the year, the year around, that's what we went with.
Because right now, it looks like as of the end of March, we're at about 64 grand for overtime.
Well, I think you have to look at when that was prepared. So I extrapolated based on year-to-date at the end of November, whenever the budget was presented.
Right, so there might be a little bit more room there for an adjustment based on.
There may be. And I think that's why, you know, one of the other reasons I was pointing out the medical issue because that, you know, the medical leave was up until, I believe, day of January, was it, that we had personnel?
Yeah, she was out for about four or five months.
Right. So, so Camille, that would certainly start to trend downward after that dispatcher came back. So, yes.
Something that we can look at as we get a little closer to deliberations, perhaps.
And I think, you know, I can't remember who said it last year, but you know, this is a little bit of, you know, I hate to use the term, a crapshoot of, you know, we can go down knowing that, you know, there's always a possibility we have to come back. And all we want to do is be transparent and get enough money so we don't have to come back. Because that, you know, that's the last thing we want to do. But unfortunately, this is one of the one areas in our budgets that, you know, you have no control over, unfortunately, and we may have to come back. But I'd rather try to get as close to on the money as we can.
Yeah, understood. Thank you. Okay.
Mike, do you think though that there was also a trend upwards due to like COVID, that there was more calls?
I'm sorry, Ann, you cut out in the first part.
Oh, sorry. Did you think there was more calls or increasing calls due to the COVID, you know, pandemic?
No, I think, well, that's a great question, and I'll be talking probably about that more on the police side of things. But I, it's interesting that our calls went up so significantly when, when the majority of our services were at least altered and changed due to COVID. You know, I think society, our crime has gone up. I think our calls for service for fire, police, and EMS have all gone up. So I think, you know, it's a societal thing. I don't know if we can sociologically say it's related just to COVID or other factors. But I'm definitely seeing a much increased demand for services from, you know, across the board.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we're all set. We can move on to the next department. Everybody all set with dispatch? Yeah, okay. Let's move on to Department 216, the police.
Okay, for the.
I'm sorry, it's, I'm sorry, Chief. Chief, excuse me. I just forgot to check. Are there any capital items related to dispatch?
Oh.
There is not. Just to throw that out there, that, you know, the move to the new building, dispatch will be completely configured with all new equipment. So one good piece of that is that will carry us forward and not have to replace really anything for quite a while. So, you know, capital-wise, we should be in very, very good shape with dispatch.
So now the police department, and if you just want to tackle the couple of items in the capital at the same time, I think that does make sense.
Absolutely. Okay, just, just a little, you know, kind of lay this out. Sometimes I think, you know, we forget where we stand with, with some of, you know, our agencies inside of ourselves. But our mission for the police department is to provide a safe and secure community for our residents and our visitors and our businesses that are, that are in town. We do that with 24 officers plus the chief. We have one part-time officer that is currently working. So we do it with really limited staff. And, you know, one thing going forward is the Police Commission at their meetings, and we've had long discussions about this, about trying to come up with long-term staffing. I'm definitely a believer in not doing things in a very short window. We need to look forward to see where should we be, where will we be, and where do we need to be? And the Police Commission has done that. Mr. Price will certainly talk to that a little bit more in a second. But some of the numbers, you know, 1,820, 18,000, excuse me, 225 calls for service that your emergency services went to this year, 7% increase in those. And, you know, to answer and expand on Ann's question, hard to say, and especially with all of the COVID restrictions and the police side of things, we weren't responding to as many calls for a short period of time. We weren't making motor vehicle stops. So the fact that it went up 7% certainly shows that if you looked at the entire year outside of that short window, we probably went up far more than 7% in that. But criminal activity regionally has definitely increased. And I say this because it's very important to understand what police are doing and why we're out there. We've had a 50%, 56% increase in criminal activity for crimes against persons, 11% increase in crimes against property, and a 71% increase in crimes against society. That's all in the year 2020 inside the town of Eastline. And it's not exclusive to Eastline. This is law enforcement in general is experiencing this everywhere. There is an uptick in those calls for service, those uptick in the need for police to investigate criminal activity. So at the same time, one thing we have been very effective at is we've had a 20% decrease in motor vehicle accidents, which I think is a, you know, a very important thing because it keeps all of us and our families safe on the roadways. The good piece of that is even with a 20% reduction, serious motor vehicle accidents resulting in significant injuries have been even more so reduced. So we've had a definitely a very large decrease in that. You know, on the police department note, we talked about with the IT. We have become extremely IT-focused and technology-focused, and we continue to do that. We continue to grow with that. You will have shortly a dispatch center, which is outfitted with all of the state-of-the-art equipment that's needed to do the job functions they need to do for the community, for police, fire, EMS. We have body cameras that you all are very aware of and are integral in that conversation and decision to bring those onboard. May 11th will be the start of the install and the in-car cameras and the body camera systems. And hopefully, we have those deployed soon after that. We have the new records management and dispatch-related system, which is called NextGen, which is really the heart of your fire, police, and EMS dispatch system. That new system is also going to be going in around that same timeframe. We have new criminal justice information systems. So right now, technology is the forefront of what we're doing. And that's important because technology allows us to do our job better, more efficiently, and with more accountability. I think especially when you get to the issue of how we document situations that happen, be it that video documentation, audio documentation, be that records through report systems, is crucial to us doing our jobs, us doing our job properly. But also for us as administrators and us as a community to make sure that our officers are doing the job that we are enlisting them to go out there and do. Some other projects that are out there, we're looking to really kind of bring all of the video monitoring systems throughout town onto one platform to make sure that we are providing, you know, the safest environment possible. And that being all of our town, you know, parks and the beaches. Not be on separate systems for each, but all on a singular system, which allows efficiency, replacement, and planning. And I think that's, that's very important. So going forward. Camille, can I share my screen? Do you have, am I allowed?
Should be allowed.
Okay. So the Police Commission put together, and this was presented to the Board of Selectmen, a short PowerPoint because, you know, statistically, kind of coming up with some points. So what the police come up with is a plan. We have to recognize, actually, Chairman Price, did you want to present this, or would you like me to?
Um, I'll just real quick over the high points, if you don't mind. And I just want to say, the commission has been very cognizant of the fact that the town is growing. We're the seventh highest in the state. But at the same time, we are one of the lowest in the region for number of officers per thousand people. And at the same time, it's expensive to hire police officers. We understand that. We, as a commission, want to save the town as much money as possible, but we want to provide the best police department we possibly can, giving our guys and gals the best thing they can have and our residents the best, the best department they can have. So we came up, we didn't want to just say, okay, well, this year we need this many, next year we might need that many. We came up with a six-year plan so that the Board of Finance and the Board of Selectmen can plan ahead for our department to grow at the same, as it needs to with the town. So basically, what we did was we did a six-year plan, which would bring our average number of officers per. which would bring our average number of officers per thousand people to one point nine. We're currently at one point two three. The regional average is two point oh seven officers per thousand people. We would like to hire two officers per year for the next six years, which will put us where we need to be today, not six years from now. But I think I think it will help. It's always been, well, we've always done it with twenty four officers, so we should be fine with twenty four, but the fact of the matter is we're not. They're stretched very, very thin. They're doing a remarkable job with what they have, but we really need to consider a long term plan. So the commission would like this board to consider hiring the two officers per year for six years, which will get us back up to where we really need to be to provide effective policing for the town. And that's pretty much where the commission is. This, thank you, Mike, this is showing the number of police police officers and average population in the region throughout. You know, if you look at Clinton, Saybrook, they're high. If we could get up to one point nine, we would be in really good shape. It would be fine. So that's that's where the commission is. I'll let the chief take over because he's a much better presenter than I am. I just wanted to speak for the commission briefly. Mike, you want to take over?
I just have a quick question on this slide since it's up and everybody's looking at it. So you are not including the towns that are part of the state trooper system, right? And how many officers they have? This is just independent municipality.
Right, and that that would only be Monville today. That's the only, all a like sized department. Monville is the only one that exists right now that is similar size.
Okay, thank you.
And actually, and and just as a as a piece, Camille, Monville, even though the resident trooper town has more police officers in their town and they have the same similar population, so.
Okay.
So, you know, going forward to the the do more with less, we've had this conversation in the past about what officers can efficiently do. I think it's important to understand that, you know, we have officers that are out there doing more with less and doing it very effectively, but, you know, there's only the calls that I get for increased police services, increase, increase traffic enforcement, increased enforcement of other venues. Certainly come far more than the people saying there's too many police out there that are working. I think when you look statistically, one of the biggest drivers in my mind is the fact of if the town of East Lime is seventh in growth, but with the fifth lowest for police staffing, there is a breaking point that you can foresee in the future of when you have one sergeant and two officers working as your shift on a Saturday in the summer, because that's all our staffing allows, that can be a very dangerous situation. So I think it's prudent for the police commission to look forward. And again, not looking to staff exorbitantly, but looking to staff at the minimum of what the industry standards are for providing the services that that we need to provide. And I think, you know, that that's the plan that, again, I don't want to speak for Chairman Price or the commission, but certainly, you know, the plan that they were pushing for in the heart. So I I think with that, with that being said, I'd like to go through our budget proposals, and I'd like to just hit on the points of the pieces that are changes, but certainly open any questions that you may have in those. But certainly, one of the one of the additional expenses, prisoner expenses, we added an expense of five thousand dollars. Now, that expense is to cover meals, blankets. That is a guess. As we're moving into the new facility, we certainly are noticing a, you know, significant savings from what we were paying the town of Waterford. But we do have to budget a line for what will be or could be expensive. We have no way of knowing. We just tried to base that on around figure that other departments were utilizing similar size. And next year, when we sit here, I think we'll have a little bit more cognitive data to look at and say, this is why we're at this amount, or we can reduce or or increase that amount. A couple of other pieces that are connected directly to the police accountability bill. Psychological testing, which is now a requirement of the bill. Every police officer in every five years needs to go through psychological evaluation. We have worked with East Lime Psychological to come up with her scope and cost for that. But that is going to run us about four thousand eighty dollars per year to do five officers per year. So that is the cost of that. Drug testing, about a thousand dollars increase for that. It's nine sixty seven. CLIA accreditation, if you recall, is part of the conversation we had on the police accountability bill, required us to become CLIA accredited. And there's several pieces of that CLIA accreditation which are important. It's the cost to actually get go get that accreditation, which is eleven thousand eleven thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. But also, you'll see, I think correspondingly, and I don't want to speak for Anna, but I think inside of the legal line, there's also an amount of money that was placed in there for our work with a law firm to help with those policies. This is a law firm that specializes in law enforcement policy around the nation and giving us the best possible policies that we could have, not only to be accredited, but also to make sure that we're providing the best services to our community. Bias training mandates. There's an increase in that, about fifty six hundred dollars, because that is a requirement of the police accountability bill. Yes, it looks like it's unstable, so I'm gonna stop my video while I talk to hopefully help it out. The tasers, we're looking to increase our capabilities on the less lethal front. That is something that every officer should have a taser deployed with them to have that less lethal option. Unfortunately, the department, the way it has grown over the years, has not kept up with the taser replacement. I'm looking to do that by purchasing five additional tasers and also the training cartridges that go with it, and also a battery replacement program. Those are a key piece of your escalation of force and having a a less lethal, additional less lethal options out there to mitigate situations without having to hopefully resort in a a higher level of force being utilized. Boat storage, we went up a short, a small amount because we're recognizing costs that were coming on board that were related to, you know, some some cost of the two vessels that we maintain. Uniforms requesting an increase that was going to be corresponding to additional officers being brought on board as well as a contractual increase on the uniform allowance that's provided to officers each year. So with that being said, certainly open up to any questions inside of the police budget.
Do you want to touch on the capital side?
Sure. So on the capital side, several of the projects we have, and we do not have many. If you recall, the police vehicles are self funded. We set up this program several years ago where we take money that is received from all of the road construction work that takes place. There's a fee charged to those vendors that even goes into an account which provides us the ability now to purchase fully outfitted police vehicles, really at not really, at no impact or cost to the taxpayers of the town of East Lime. That has worked very well and continues to work well. So while we are are putting two vehicles into this, that is not a cost that is borne by by taxpayers. The other issue or the other item is the Waterford East Lime boat engine. We have gone into this four year project of putting money aside to replace the engines on that vessel. It is a grant acquired regional vessel. We are required as half of that grantee to maintain that boat, make replacements on that boat, and those engines have been slated several years ago as in need of replacement. And just trying to do the prudent thing by putting money aside each year to get to that amount when it's purchased. And Lieutenant Mason, just fill him in on where that may stand.
So like we did last year for the port security grant in conjunction with Waterford, the officer that's taken over the Marine Patrol for them, basically been helping him apply for this year's port security grant. You know, as a failsafe, of course, we hope that we do get it, although the notice of funding opportunity that has come out is really geared toward IT infrastructure this year. But because that vessel was originally received via Department Homeland Security grant, it does qualify for the equipment replacement. So with that being said, you know, we're definitely hopeful that we do meet that criteria this year. It is a very you know, competitive grant process. If it does come through, we would be required between both towns to cover twenty five percent because it's over the twenty five thousand dollar threshold. So if that is the case, and both towns split the final cost based on the competitive bids that have gone out, we would only be spending eight thousand dollars of everything that we've already put aside. So that's what we are hoping for clearly, so that other money can be used toward toward different projects or whatever. But again, that that is where we're at. So we're just in the process now that that grant is being accepted to be reviewed.
Okay. Thank you. I think what I'd like to do is go down the list in order again when we get to the questions. That'll keep us on track, and everybody will know how far we are into this. So with that, we'll start with John Birmingham. If you have any questions for the police chief on his budget?
Let's have a couple. Object line five thirteen. Put up tall parade duty. Seeing that in the current year, a lot of the events were canceled. Any money that was saved, was that brought forward to this coming year?
Well, we we don't have the ability to do that, John. That would be something that would I think your board is the only board that could do that. I'm not sure they can do you can do that for salary line. So I I can't answer that. I have to leave that to Camille and Anna.
You know, Anna?
So when there is excess money left over in the operational budget at the end of the year, it gets returned to the general fund, and then the budgeting starts from ground zero the next year. Would you say that's accurate, Anna?
Um, yes, we do carry over some line items, as you recall, but it's it's not something that we look to do in every departmental budget, as Camille stated. Anything left over would go into the ongoing results of operations.
No, I realize that. I just was wondering if what was brought over this time? Do you know that off the top of your head?
You mean into the current year's budget?
Yeah.
Nothing for any of the police wages.
Okay, all right. One other question on five fifteen, which was the boat overtime. What caused that to be? The overtime.
John, could you say that question again?
I have the code five fifteen where it says overtime boat duty.
Yep.
Didn't it didn't go up much, but I was just curious why it was overtime in that line.
Why is why it's why is why are the boats being operated with overtime funds or regular?
Because again, because your staffing is an over, it's always been an overtime assignment. You don't have enough officers to run a full time Marine Patrol in addition to having officers on patrol. There are officers that are off their shift that are out on, you know, the water doing those those functions.
Okay, thanks.
John, the slight increase is due to contractual raises?
Okay. That's all I have.
Okay, thanks, John. With that, let's move on to Anne Chikello for questions.
Yes, Chief, if you could send us the PowerPoint, the the few slides. Yeah, thank you. And and then my other question is, I don't know if you can do this, if you could send us a breakdown of the the unfunded mandates and the costs associated with them from the Police Accountability Act? Because, you know, I'm aware you you kind of mentioned some costs, but I'm assuming there's a lot of costs that are going to be coming down the pipe.
And if it's okay with you, Anne, I think I can please someone refresh my memory. If I I think I did it to the Board of Selectmen, Mr. Nicholson, was it a presentation about the impact of the accountability bill? Yeah, we send you that because I had a breakdown of all the costs that we foresaw at that point.
Okay, so do you know when about you did that, and I could go back and find it?
In the fall. I think it was it was fall timeframe. I think Septemberish, September, Octoberish.
And it was to the Board of Selectmen?
Yeah, we'll collect it and send it back out to you, Anne.
Okay.
Because things have been updated since then.
Okay, great. Thank you. And my other one question is, you said there was an increase in crime and what I normally see, I read the paper every day and I read the police letter, and usually I never see East Lime in there. I I see a lot of my clients in there in Norwich and New London, but I don't see much in East Lime. So I was just curious, because you said there was an increase in crime, does it just not get put in the paper or?
Yeah, they they there's a significant, you know, I've worked very closely with a day for many, many years, and there's significant shift that's taken place over the last two years with their crime reporting. They're they're just not putting the the manpower and the effort and the time into really putting things out there. We send them these releases on a regular basis that just aren't making it into the paper. So I I would always caution, you shouldn't be using the paper. We should not be using the paper as our gauge of what criminal activity is taking place. What we also have to understand too is they're only generally reporting on, you know, the finalization of arrests, not a crime that's reported. Unless it's a significant crime, they're not reporting something that was reported and hasn't led to an arrest yet. And if you if you also, you know, if if you really, I I just, you know, will stress each month when I do the police commission meeting, I provide a report to them, which details a lot of, you know, a lot of this information. So certainly, I would encourage you to take a look each month at that because I think that is a very good real time parameter on what's happening in our community, what's happening with the police. I update each call for service, each type of arrest, and all the information in there.
Okay. And I'd be happy to send you any of those reports you want.
Yeah, that would be great. I would appreciate that. Thank you. I I have no other questions. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Anne. Let's move on to Pete.
I know that there'll be some discussion around the the addition of the police officers and understand the need for that. My question more has to do with the overtime and the several years that I've been on the Board of Finance, it's always, that's a number that's always concerned me, but it's always been fairly consistent as well. And so I'm not imagining that there's any plan to reduce that. But my question more is how does that compare to other similar departments, the overtime and the way it's structured?
I I think we're in line, if not below, many, many other departments. Certainly, we have almost no, I will say discretionary overtime. Our overtime is based on shift replacements. So if an officer is on vacation, out sick or in training, replacing that officer on patrol, so we have sufficient people working that shift is the big crux for overtime. Another piece is important to remember. In the current fiscal year, we've had one office, we've been vacant one officer position since September and another since January. So that will drive your overtime as well because that is now putting it into the situation where we're replacing that person at least three days a week, either a five day work weekend overtime. So, you know, that will drive up your overtime costs as well. We also, you know, another thing to point out, we do have an officer that is assigned to a federal task force. In the overtime, that officer work is reimbursed by the federal government. So you will see some ebbs and flows in there where that officer works overtime, it gets expended out, but then there should be a ledger item that gets put in there that adds that money back in. So again, I'm not sure how that's showing currently in the budget, but that's part of that same line.
And in terms of the contractual obligations for overtime, how does that compare to other towns?
We have no contractual. I mean, the only contractual overtime or obligation is to follow labor law. So if an officer is working in excess of forty hours in the work week, they're getting overtime. There is no contractual mandate for any officer to receive overtime any time other than working more than their forty hours during their work week. Certainly, when we have large events, i.e. celebrating a slime, we're mandating officers in. So I guess contractually, yes, that's an obligation because we're telling them you have to work. But again, we don't have, as maybe some other, not police unions, but other unions may have, you know, built in five hours of overtime per pay week or month. We don't have anything like that. It's all based on exactly what they're working and only working because it's the needs of the department.
Okay, all right, thank you. I'm good.
Is that it, Peter? Okay, let's move on to Anne Santoro.
Hi, Chief. Just a couple of questions on the topic of the additional officers that request. You had given some, and this dovetails with what Anne was also asking. You had. You had mentioned certain percentages of crime, you know, going up. I guess those statistics were regional. Did I hear you correctly in that they were?
No, th- those are specific to us. My comment regionally was other regional departments and state departments are recognizing the same types of increases.
Okay, that's great. I, um, yeah, so, um, um, any sort of a summary in that regard? Whether it's based on those reports to the Police Commission would be really helpful to get a sense of in the last year or two, where, you know, what's afflicting our, our society from a police perspective? You know, whether it's, you know, crime against person, whether it's, you know, drug related. I mean, I certainly read about that in, in the paper, you know, as well, if you, you know, whether it's, it, you know, whether, wherever the, the arrests take place. But they do often involve our town, um, or neighboring towns. So a, a sense of that would be great, um, because then we can kind of put that into some perspective with the other, um, data that you gave concerning the ratio between population and police officer. Um, so, um, yeah, that would be, that would be very helpful. Thanks. Um, I had a couple of other questions. Um, let's see. Um, on the new, it's a new item, one hundred, testing and accreditation, the sixteen thousand four ninety-seven. Um, at this point, any of that potentially reimbursable, comparable to what happened with the body cams? And also, this is like part two of the same question. I know we had, uh, I didn't know if we got under the wire with the body cam reimbursement, but what's happened with that?
Well, I'll answer the first question first, is I've, I've seen or heard of no legislation that's, that's been proposed that would provide any reimbursement for any of those unfunded mandates that were pushed forward in the Police Accountability Bill. So, um, unless something drastically changes from the state government, I don't see, um, you know, that, that amount being reimbursed. Lieutenant Jezerski has submitted all the paperwork for our reimbursement of the body cameras. I'll let her tell you where that stands right now.
Okay, thank you. Thanks.
Yeah, the grant application has been finished. I'm just waiting on a PIN number from, uh, OPM. And then once we get the PIN number, I can submit it. So I'm hoping by the end of the week to submit the grant.
Okay, that's, that's good. And good, good luck with that. I know there was a limited amount of money making, you know, available. So let's hope we, we, uh, we get some of that.
And Dana, what was the amount we're going to reimburse?
It's thirty percent and I don't.
It was the one, was it one thirty? I believe it was in the one thirty range or?
I think it was, it was like one fifty-four range.
Fifty-four, okay, sorry.
So, I mean, not only do we have unfunded mandates, but the ones they do fund, they're not funding, uh, fully. So it's a double.
Just to point out, it was, you know, the, the, it was being reimbursed at fifty percent. And then when they, the Police Accountability Bill was passed, it reduced to thirty percent. So, you know, that, that, that was a significant impact because of the additional twenty percent, which certainly would have been helpful to our community and other communities as well.
Right. You know, such an important requirement and really brings us technologically up to date. So I would hope that, you know, everyone gets on board with that. Okay, um, the status of our canine officer, where are we with that?
So, uh, we, we, we have purchased a canine. We are, he is in his second week of training. You know, much as you do when, when a, a couple is expecting, you, you don't necessarily roll everything out until you know everything's going to go well. Um, so we will be rolling him out publicly, um, with photos, et cetera, hopefully very, very soon. We kind of just wanted to wait a little bit to see how he took to his first couple of weeks of training. He was purchased at Shallow, Shallow Creek Kennel in Pennsylvania. He started his training program. It is in, it is an eight-week program. So we are very, very hopeful. You'll have a, a very outstanding canine on the road within the next couple of months. But, you know, you will see something very, very soon with his name picture and getting to meet him.
Nice. That's, that's great, um, Chief. And will he, will he have a companion at some point in the near future and will his budget cover that?
Oh, wow. Well, there he is. So, uh, uh, Officer Lagman is the canine officer. He is part of the selection process. The, the way that the canine program works is you select your, your handler first. That handler then where the trainer goes and, and then selects at the kennel, uh, the appropriate canine for your community based on our needs and that handler. So he, he selected for the handler, not vice versa.
Okay, that, that's great. Um, you know, this actually leads into another question I had about public relations. Because you mentioned, you know, rolling out some information about, um, your, our canine officer newly minted. So I noticed that, uh, line of three twenty-nine is on, uh, public relations. And it's pretty much dedicated to the written information pamphlets and that type of thing, at least according to your narrative that, um, that you provide. So I was just wondering, uh, with the other kinds of PR activities that happen through a given year, do you incur expenses with those? I mean, I know sometimes you've done coffees, you, I know COVID has put the, put the, you know, damper on some of that. But, um, is this a, a line item that needs more funding, I guess is my basic question?
Well, I think, you know, we, we always, we always can look towards, I think, the public, you know, the public interface and look for better ways to do it. So, um, yes, I, I think it probably does. We've always tried to stay extremely modest with what we're asking for there. You know, one of the other things, this, you know, this can, it sometimes funds the challenge points that we hand out to kids or, or people. You know, at events that is sort of a, an award type issue. So there's a lot of things that I think can be encompassed in public relations. I think we certainly, as we move into the building for technology, we're going to be trying to search for better ways to connect and continue to connect with our community. So, um, certainly I think, yes, that's something that probably could have saved.
Okay. And I also thought with everything happening with respect to police departments nationally, that this, you know, this component of your budget might be something that, you know, uh, would, would need additional funding at some point. But in any event, so my last question is about, um, the tasers. You mentioned, uh, you did say in your presentation, five additional tasers. Could you give a cost to those?
So the cost for the, I need to get back to that sheet. Uh, the five. Of course, I put the paper back on for me. Uh, the five tasers cost a total of eight thousand five hundred and thirty-five. So that, that is forty-five total. And understanding, you know, part of, part of that is we had tasers that are end of life or old, um, past end of life. We have ones that are not specifically issued to certain officers. And I just wanted to make sure that we're able to get those out there, because many of our junior officers coming on, uh, that are taser trained and certified, didn't have them available to bring with them. And, and to me, we need to have that option. We need to have that tool out on the road for them to utilize should they need to keep everybody safe. So, um, that's why, you know, I really think it's important for us to expand that program.
Absolutely. Okay, that's all I have. Thanks so much. I, a last point, um, uh, your, your narratives have gotten very detailed, which is great. I know, um, I think two years ago, we, we kind of asked you for more narratives. So, um, it, much, you know, uh, much improved. And, um, I, you know, I used to have probably, you know, twenty more questions. So, so that's, thanks so much. Thank you very much.
And to follow up, uh, and, uh, and, and C, um, you both mentioned more detail for the, uh, police officers. I also want the commission to keep in mind that, um, when we are ranked fifth from the bottom, they're using the population of eighteen thousand. Not our summer population, not the fact that we're a tourism town and that we have a highway that cuts in the middle, which we have to respond to. And a state park that we have to respond to. So, um, keep that in mind. If we actually took the actual population of a July day, um, we would be the very bottom of the list of population, of, of police officers per capita. Um, and I think we value our police, uh, we value our safety in our town a little bit more than the statistics show. So do keep that in mind. These guys are stretched. And policing also, we don't have to get into it tonight, but involves a whole lot more than one officer pulling over a car. And then, you know, if there's a DWE at ten o'clock at night, maybe there's a single car accident involved with that. Two or all three of the police officers assigned that evening would be at that scene. So when a call comes in that there's a bonfire on a private beach, or there's suspicious kids walking behind a, a business, there's no other officers to respond to those. They scramble, they get to them, but our response is delayed and it's, it's, um, it's, it's sub par for what I would hope in this town. So, um, they do the very, very best they can. I want to be on record saying that.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Um, with that, uh, well, let's move on to Rich Steele for the chief.
Hey, thanks for that comment, Mark. That was going to be one of my questions of these calls that you have. What, what percentage are multiple officers required to respond to the call? Do you have a feel for that?
I mean, I, I would say a large, I would say a larger majority. I, I would say a good majority of those. Um, officer safety issues, uh, person safety, depends on the type of call, but any alarm, any suspicious person, any domestic, any disagreement. We're, we're sending more than one officer if possible, but I also want you to try to envision, you know, a situation where it is Saturday in the summer and you have three officers working the town, um, and you're getting four, five, six calls going on at the same time. So that's something we certainly recognize and, you know, our officers are running call to call, which has a significant impact on the ability to effectively do jobs. While I, I still think we do an effective and efficient job, um, officers could spend more time sometimes on some of these calls. They could spend some more time on follow-up investigations, which are always impacted by call line. And then I want you to, you know, as we point, we know all the time, we talk about traffic. The biggest complaint I get multiple times a week and day, and both lieutenants get the same thing, um, is people speeding, people doing traffic. You know, traffic, uh, activity. Um, when the officers are going call to call or having to do follow-up on cases and criminal reports, they don't necessarily have the time to sit on the side of the road and do traffic enforcement. So, you, you know, all of this is kind of a domino effect of the ability to effectively do our jobs is impacted, um, with less staffing. The more staffing you have, uh, the greater your ability is to provide more services, to provide more time, to provide more effective and in-depth services to our residents. I think, you know, that's a crucial part of it.
Right. And, and of that large number of, of calls, what, what percentage lead to arrests?
Very small. And, and that is, you know, that's historic to, to almost every police department. Out of eighteen thousand calls for service, I think you have a hundred and eighty, uh, criminal or a hundred and eighty-ish criminal arrests this past year. So it definitely is not, you know, you, your arrest part is not significant driver of what police work, um, is. And, you know, that certainly is part and parcel to where we are as a society and what we're asking our police departments to do.
Right, right. Um, and, and then in the, the presentation, um, it mentioned, in granted, Mark, you mentioned during the summer, our population balloons and we're responsible for the state park and the interstate. But we're, we're fifth lowest in officer per population. Um, do you have a listing of the four lower ones?
Yeah, uh, yeah, it came out in the state report. Let me get to that. I have to look through the entire report. Hold on a second. Because the way it was listed by Talc, you, you have East Hampton.
Did you freeze? You would think Jerry Seinfeld would be able to afford better internet service.
You would. It's Comcast. A brand, brand new Comcast. It happened. Portland. Suffield. And then, uh, so what's, I'm, I'm missing, I'm missing one here in this. Uh, Suffield, Portland. Plainfield.
Okay. Um, and, and then another aspect of looking at kind of police funding, in terms of percentage of town budget that's appropriated to police, how do we compare with other municipalities? Is that type of data available?
Um, that may be something that is available through, uh, Connecticut Council of Municipalities. I don't have that data.
Okay.
Um, Mark, I, I can ask the question. Yeah, or, or is there a police organization that might know that too? Uh, you know, you go onto the Police Chiefs Association, a few others. We, we could sniff around for that, um, Richard, in the next couple of weeks.
Okay, appreciate it.
It's a good question.
Yeah, thank you. Um, and then I'm wondering if we work through the, the plan of the commission to increase the size of the force, do we anticipate that we should consequently have lower overtime costs?
I, I, I think it is never a, a safe conver.
Who's in chief? Chief, we lost you there for a sec. Keep on trying, Chief. We'll let you know when we can hear you.
Uh, perhaps Sergeant Mason or Lieutenant Mason can answer the question, because he's, he's been around this question before for response.
So, looking at, and yeah.
Uh, you, you have me now, so.
There you go, all right.
So, so I, I, you can never say that, that increased staffing is going to reduce overtime. Overtime is based on, um, those open shifts. You can sometimes make an argument if we have an overstaffed evening shift and someone takes the shift off, you may be at a point where you have one more that you don't have to replace. That certainly does happen. Uh, but I think to plan for that, um, does not necessarily work, because I've seen too many examples where people said, we're going to hire to reduce overtime, um, and ultimately it doesn't really succeed in doing that. We're looking to hire to provide proper staffing, um, and the overtime, um, is also a piece to provide proper staffing. But I don't think that you're going to see a significant reduction in that.
Okay. And, and I thought you gave a very nice explanation about how when we're doing contractual duty, construction sites or road crews, et cetera, that that helps offset the cost of our police vehicles. But I'm wondering, in terms of police staffing, how does that impact our, our current staffing? And, um, what, what's the comparison of the rate that we get for providing the, the police at, at those sites versus what our overtime might cost?
Well, you, you're, that reimbursement pays for the vehicles, it pays for the overtime, it pays for fringe benefits, as well as an administrative fee for the town. So in essence, the town is actually making money for those off-duty officers to be working those construction sites. Now those officers are off-duty. They're not working their scheduled shifts. So in addition to that, you see in them sitting on the side of the road for eight hours, they're also either on their day off or working an eight-hour shift, uh, be it evenings, midnight, stays, depending on, you know, what their rotation is. So, uh, the town actually is not incurring any loss at all. And we made that adjustment several years ago to, you know, to make sure of that, to make sure that we were capturing the same type costs other communities were doing and it was going to be financially beneficial to them.
Okay, thanks. That, that's really helpful. I, I think especially for the public to have that understanding. And, and then probably my, my last question is, and maybe it's an elephant in the room, I'm not sure. But there, there's a lot of discussion across the country of police departments hiring in social workers to kind of help with addressing some of the, the calls that regular police officers may be responding to. Are, are we looking at that at all in, in our future?
Well, I, I, I think first of all, any assistance that understaffed police departments can be provided, are, are, are benefit. And I think, you know, we helping our community, um, certainly is part and parcel to the job that we have to do. If you've seen the, the piece that has been out there, there's been an advertising push, um, out there to look to hire more individuals for mobile crisis. Um, I, you know, I would question the social worker part versus the psychiatric response part. Certainly I think that we would be amenable to any type of assistance that could help us on calls, that could help us with situations or referrals. Uh, but we also have to understand that the state provides many of these services already. Mobile outreach, um, goes out to every community in the state of Connecticut for psychiatric calls. Many times they go out to those calls and then call the police to come out to assist them. But they are the call. When you call two-one-one, when a psych, a psychiatrist's office calls, they're calling mobile outreach to go. they're calling mobile outreach to go try to handle that situation prior to police involvement. So some of those things already exist. I think, you know, certainly it's worthy of a much larger conversation. I think we also have to envision, how do you do it on a twenty-four-seven, three-sixty-five basis? That's a problem, right? So if you say, we're going to hire a social worker, that social worker can only encompass forty hours per week. So if you have policies that say there's a certain type of call they're going to handle, how do you handle those calls on that individual's off-hours, which are far more than they're actually working? So again, I, I think there's, there is definite room for growth inside of this area of our society, not just policing, to say, we need more resources. I also think it's important that we think back to when they were cut. You know, early in my career, North State Hospital was open. It was right on the corner of where I worked. We brought people directly there when they were having crisis-type situations. We have significantly cut back our, our tools in society to handle a vast majority of situations. And what society has done is said, we're going to put all of this onto the police department. Because the police department is the only, you know, twenty-four-seven, three-sixty-five fully staffed agency. And I'm sure both fire chiefs and Mr. Bear from the ambulance can attest the number of calls that they're involved in, that maybe it didn't fall into a category, but that individual ended up in the back of an ambulance or at a fire EMS call because of a crisis that were happening, but because they were and we were the only agencies that were able to respond to handle that person's situation. So I, I think, you know, that has to be part of the conversation in a long-term planning of how do we get to that part where we have those services? But again, not forgetting, the state is providing those services and the state itself is having a big push, which I think unless you're a very large city and municipality, it's difficult to be part of that. I also want to point out that, you know, we have to remember the town of East Line doesn't necessarily have a social services department. Many communities that do have these conversations have fully-staffed social services department to refer to. I came from an agency in town that had that, where as a police officer, I could refer somebody who was having a problem to a town social services agency. Didn't replace the police. It didn't negate the ability or need to have police go out to a call or handle situations. It just gave us another resource to refer somebody to. I think that's really where our society needs to be looking, in my opinion, Rich. Of, we have, yeah, there's a lot of things that need to be fixed. There's a lot of options that need to be put out there. But we, at three in the morning on a Saturday, are the individuals who are sitting in somebody's living room trying to delve through these crises with, you know, far less resources than we probably should have.
Right. Thank you very much. That, that's all that I have for now.
Camille, do you mind if I clarify one thing on the commission's plan?
Sure, Dan.
Thank you. Based on some of the questions from the board members, police work is, is a variety of things. Probably, and I'm guessing, ten, fifteen percent is dealing with actual crime and crime stats. The rest is dealing with just the public on a day-to-day basis. If, if you've gotten gas at Costco lately, you see the apartments back there. You know our town is growing. There are a lot more people involved. We need more officers, not necessarily because we're having a spike in crime. We need more officers so they can do their job, dealing with the day-to-day things that they have to deal with every day. Like the chief said, a motor vehicle accident, we have a sergeant and two officers on every shift. The motor vehicle accident takes the sergeant and one of those officers away, which leaves one officer to deal with the rest of the entire town. We need to up that staffing. We need to do things more just because the, the town in general, the police work in general, needs more people. Our, our department can't do it on twenty-four people anymore. And I just want to really stress that. It's not because we have a crime wave. It's, it's, it's because they need to do their jobs effectively for everybody in the town. So I just wanted to clarify that a little bit.
Okay, Dan, thank you. Chief, I just have a couple of questions, really for clarification purposes. I was trying to take notes as you were speaking and I jotted down some of the percentages for the increase in crime in East Line. You said fifty-six percent increase in what kind of crime?
Well, back up. I think it was for crime against persons, but let me just make sure. Yes, fifty-six percent increase in crime against persons.
And an eleven percent increase in property crimes?
Yep.
And a twenty percent decrease in motor vehicle accidents?
Right. And the seventy-one increase, seventy-one percent increase in crimes against society. So that would be your drug, your drug-type crimes, prostitution, like those, those type things.
Okay. So just getting back to the number of calls per year, eighteen thousand five hundred, I think, is what I heard, give or take?
Yes.
So eighteen thousand five hundred, that would put us at about fifty calls per day? Help us to understand, what do those calls involve? Is it just a telephone call for two minutes? Do you have to dispatch police officers to the scene?
It, it's, it's a wide variety of things. So the person could be calling because they have, it could be a domestic situation, it could be a scam situation, it could be those accidents, it could be other type criminal activity. It could be somebody who's having a neighbor dispute, a family dispute. It's, it's all encompassing of every type of call that we go on. So I guess I don't know if that answers fully the question, but-
Well, well, I think so. Without getting into too much detail, it helps us to understand that some of these calls are simply just calls. Maybe a call for-
Well, the officer, but, but the officer's, you know, out in their vehicle, they're not sitting there on the phone. So that, that's the other issue is, these aren't calls at the dispatcher's meeting. These are calls that are entered into the system that an officer is actually, somebody's actually addressing.
But they don't actually have to go to the location where the call was coming from?
Well, if the officer's driving his car, he has no way, he's not calling on his personal cellphone to talk to the person. So he is going to be either going back to the police department to talk to somebody on the phone or going to the place they're calling from. So-
Okay. And, and how much did that increase over the prior year?
Seven percent.
Seven. So getting back to the increase in property crimes, crimes against humanity, crimes against persons, some of those percentages seem pretty high. What kind of numbers are we dealing with there? You know, are we talking, you know, if there was two serious crimes going up to three, that's a fifty percent increase, but I don't think-
And I'm just going by, by, by the FBI stats. So I'd have to actually delve through and, and, you know, parse these numbers out.
So maybe as- Alright, so maybe as Mark Nickerson pulls together some of that other data that he was taking notes on, that our members had requested, you could add that to the list. What kind of numbers are we talking about? Because for us to talk about percentages in some cases and actual numbers in other cases, you know, I just want to make sure that we have all the data so that we can really see-
So, and, and just remember, just remember when this, when the state and the federal government released their reports on crime in Connecticut, whatever you say, they do it by percentages. So what we're doing is just taking the data that they provided in these reports and putting it into, you know, this for you. So we don't actually delve through those numbers. We can do that. We can call through them and get all the data that you want. But simply, when these reports are released, it's those percentages of increase is what they show.
So there's no internal tracking system or mechanism for you to keep track of, of the different-
There, there's a million different tracking. I mean, I don't, what, what are you looking to track right now? I just, I want to make sure I'm getting you the answer that you need. However, I'm taking the federal reports of the crime increases or trends.
So you're saying there's an eleven percent increase in property crimes in the city or town of East Line? What, what number increase does that represent? Does that represent ten additional cases for the year?
And that's why I said we'll have to get you that number.
Or one thousand, right. So just for clarification, that's what I'm looking for, actual data, the numbers of, to support the percentage increases that you just relayed to us. That'd be great.
Yep.
Okay, let's see. One, just one other question. Starting the budget last year, there was a new police officer that was added, I believe, mid-year, correct? Mid-fiscal year?
It was approved for, yes.
Yep. And that officer was responsible for traffic?
And, and they were, right. And we haven't gotten to that yet because we haven't been fully staffed. So once we get, we, we just have approved, the commission has approved to venture into new hire, which hopefully will be on board the next couple of weeks. Once that person is off of their training program, we then will be at full staff and have the ability to deploy somebody into that traffic post. Unfortunately, as soon as it was approved, we have been without, we've been down at least one officer and now two. So we couldn't take people off of patrol, which would cause overtime to do the traffic post. But that is the intent.
So it was lucky then, I guess, that the accident rate went down twenty percent in the past year. I imagine that's due to the lack of commuting and the increase in telecommuting for most folks. So do you think that that trend is going to continue? Do you think it's going to come roaring back?
I think it's also, I, I think it's also working very hard on directed enforcement, on finding our places where we get our most complaints, we get our most accidents and directing officers' activities when they do have time and ability to do it to those locations. So I think it's, it's part and parcel to a lot of things. I certainly think your, your commuting was less for a while. I drive around, you know, today or tomorrow, and I don't see less cars out on the road, especially from Flanders Road, especially on Boston Post or, or those streets. But certainly, I think it played a role for a couple of months this year. But, you know, I think we've also tried very, very hard to direct our assets and our resources towards our problem areas and not as widespread. At the same time, I get calls every single day and emails almost every day from people that are complaining about the speeding on their dead-end neighborhood and their streets. So, you know, while we've been able to get accidents down on our main roads, the complaints from your constituents and our residents are that they continues to be a problem that we need to, you know, find ways to better address, so.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that explanation. That's all the questions I have for, relative to the police department tonight. Would anybody else on the board like to ask a final question before we move on?
I, I have, thanks, Camille. I, less a question, more just a request. When the additional information about the crime statistics comes our way, this is to Dan's point, which I guess we can kind of read between the lines in that section five-eleven. But it would be great to just have a, a couple of sentences articulating the instances that you began to describe, Dan, where officers are responding to A, B, or C and then can't get to D. You know, this kind of thing where the shortage is most apparent. I, I think that would be really helpful because we did the kind of, I agree with you. We did kind of go down the path of the crime statistics, which is an obvious, you know, reality, and we need to respond to it. But I think, you know, you've, you've touched on this other more underlying problem. So maybe a couple of extra sentences while you're at it might give additional information to us because you have to cover a lot in that line item five-eleven, you know? So, so that may be helpful. Thanks.
So when do we start? Just to wrap up on this additional information request, our deliberations start, let's see, on the twenty-first of April. So when might we expect that information to be returned to us? Do we pick a date now?
We'll gather it up and try to have it to you before the end of next week.
That is after our deliberations begin. So we would need to get that information before. How about by Friday, the sixteenth?
So in three days.
Yeah. I think a lot of it already exists. It's just pulling it together.
Mike, if you have the manpower for it.
Well, I think, and, and Camille, just to, again, to, to stress, the, the FBI stats, we'd have to cull through our individual call stats to come up with those numbers. The FBI automatically takes stats out of our system. They create their data and their statistics. And, and what they're releasing are these preliminary numbers of percentages. So we then have to go through our record system to find each of those that fit in each category. It, it's not as simple as I think you're, you're thinking that it is. There isn't just a database to go, what are the numbers for this? There, these numbers are coming from the FBI. We're getting them and, and we're giving them to you based on what they have extrapolated on every department, not just the town of East Line. So again, we can get you these numbers. I, I don't see how it can be done in three days, to be quite honest with you. And I, I just stress, go, go back to stress. If you take the crime stats out of it, the crime stats were provided, in my mind, to you as a way to help you understand what we do as a department. Not in any way to justify the need for our staffing. Our, our staffing is abhorrently low regardless of a non-increase in crime versus a large increase. I was just trying to show you the activities and absolutely I'll give you anything in the world you need and get that to you. But I, I can't get that in three days because it doesn't exist in that format to be able to do that without spending a good amount of time trying to break those down.
Which is the point of the commission's plan. It's not relative to the amount of crime in town. It's relative to the staffing levels for the job they need to do in general.
Great. Are there other stats available? You're, you're quoting one point three officers per thousand people. That's what our coverage is. Are there other industry standards, number of officers per incident reported? That, of which you are aware?
Yep. The, the, the industry standard is for population, for, per thousand. What you're provided, and, and I'll give you the slide that I just, that was provided to you. I can give you the Office of Legislative Research study that was just done from two thousand and ten to nineteen, looking at all departments in the state of Connecticut, where they stand staffing-wise. That, that is done by your legislature in the state of Connecticut. You can go to Justice Statistics and we'll tell you that this is the average for different portions of our country for how many officers per thousand. There is no matrix that is done per call volume because it's based on the availability and ability for officers to be out there staffed and ready for their public. Should they need, not based on the number of calls, but based on the size of their, their communities, based on the population they search. So I can get you the legislative brief, research report. I can get you the slide, the three-piece slide deck that, that we showed. And again, I will, I will get you anything you need. But I also sometimes can't create stats because, you know, we're reliant on what the Justice Department has provided us and not really the source data to that, so to speak.
Okay. All right. Tell you what, why don't we get the information that we requested of you, that you can pull together comfortably without having to incur, you know, a lot of overtime to pull it together and give it to us by the nineteenth? That'll give us two days to digest that information before we start deliberations. And we'll just make our decisions based on whatever information you can get to us by the nineteenth? Does that sound reasonable?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. So with that, I would like to move on to Department two-twenty-six, Animal Control.
Animal Control, as we've, you know, discussed year after year, is a very, very lean budget. It is almost entirely driven by staffing and as contractual, contractually funded staffing. To recap for people, we have a regional animal control officer we share with the town of Waterford. That has worked very well. They have just moved into a, or they're in the facility in New London. They share with the city of New London. That has worked fairly well as a regional facility. There's been some construction issues over time. But again, this is a very, very lean budget, a very lean department that does the job that we, we encompass them to do. We have one full-time and one part-time animal control officer that give us twenty-four-seven coverage to both communities. And then there's also a reimbursement of this, a partial reimbursement that takes place from the town of Waterford. So the only increases inside of this budget are the contractual salary-related increases. And again, as I always do, corresponding increase in overtime because always remembering overtime is based on hours, not rate. So if the pay rate goes up and you leave the amount the same, then you've actually reduced the number of hours of overtime you have available to fund. That overtime is for the times that the part-time ACO is unavailable for the weekend coverage, calling coverage, holidays, things such as that. So again, very, very low-impact budget and not many moving parts.
Great, thank you. Any questions for the chief on this department?
I had just one question, chief. I see that it was stated in the narrative that the salary of the ACO and the part-time ACO haven't, have yet to be determined. So where are we with that? So are these numbers up to date or do we need to adjust?
Ah, that'd be, um-
The numbers are up to date.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Thanks, Ann. If there's no further questions, I would suggest we're, we're coming up on two hours. We started the meeting at 6:30. It's 8:21. Why don't we take a five-minute break, five to 10 minutes? We have eight departments to get through, so I think it's prudent to take a little break now. Let's come back at 8:30, folks. Okay? And we'll resume.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome back, everybody. The time is now 8:32. We will continue with our budget presentations. Next up is Department 217, Niantic Fire Department. Who will be addressing the board this evening?
Niantic Fire Department is Chief Barone.
Good evening, Chief.
Jim, you're muted, Jim. If you can pull off that mute.
Very good. Thank you.
Jim, we usually run down any changes, any major things that we want the commission to focus on, to anticipate maybe some questions, and then we just open it up pretty, pretty quickly to the questions, Jim.
I really don't know what you want to focus on. The, there's salaries that are all just subject to whatever raises were contractual. Not really any additions. There's some subtractions and some pay because some of the older firefighters retired. So there was some less money there. Our OSHA accounts, our vehicle maintenance. I put more money in the building maintenance because we have some door issues, some overhead door issues that I want to take care of, that we did not take care of this year. They need to be addressed on a yearly basis.
Really, it's, it's almost a flat budget. It's a 1% increase. So maybe Jimmy will go right to the questions. I think it speaks for itself.
And then remember, Jim, you have some capital items that you'll need to discuss as well.
Yep.
Maybe you can go to that.
Do you want to stay in operating until?
Well, I think there's only one item in the capital for Niantic Fire Department, correct? Twenty-eight thousand nine hundred twenty dollars.
Pardon?
Twenty-eight thousand nine hundred twenty dollars?
No.
In the capital?
No.
Well, the capital is different than CIP, Jim. And that confused us all.
So I am looking at Department 724.
Right.
And the Niantic Fire Department has a capital outlay there, which came up this year for twenty-eight thousand nine hundred twenty dollars.
It's your hose and turnout gear too. Standard, we have that almost every year, the turnout gear and the CB, the SCBA.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I have it listed on another sheet here, so I don't have it in the general fund budget, but I'm happy to discuss it.
And then remember, Jim, you have the fire apparatus.
That's what I have on this sheet. Four sets of fire gear, six cylinders, six air bottle cylinders, replace a 1992 fire truck and fire hose replacement at $5,000.
Standard stuff that we see every year from your department. And then why don't you talk to the fire truck? We'll go right to the CIP and the fact that you have almost a 30-year-old truck that needs replacing.
Very simple. We put $680,000. I asked a couple of, nothing specific. I asked a couple of manufacturers for some general prices. That's what they came up with. Fact is, we've been talking about this for four or five years. And every year, the technologies change, the qualifications change, NFPA, motor vehicle rules and so forth. So nothing is nailed down, but I, I know that we can buy a truck for this.
And you're right, that's a placeholder. When we actually go before the town through the appropriations process, we'll be showing you three quotes. We'll be showing you the, the actual prices, the manufacturer, the delivery dates, et cetera, et cetera.
Reality is, if you order it tomorrow, it's probably a year and a half away.
Wow. Wow. We appreciate you guys always squeezing as much life out of the trucks as you can. You know, like I said, it's about 28 years old, the truck?
It's a 1991. I was actually on the committee that bought that truck, so.
Wow.
Does anybody have any questions for the chief this evening on the Niantic Fire Department operating our capital budget? So I would just say, I believe the increase in the capital this year seems significant because I do believe that we had reduced the amount of turnout gear last year from four to two. Is that correct?
I believe so, plus the prices of it went up. The prices went up ridiculous.
But that is why that percentage increase seems so large is that we did negotiate to, to try to drop that down last year on a couple of sets of the turnout gear. And so we fully anticipated them coming back into the budget this year. That explains the big percentage increase. Other than that, I mean, everything looks straightforward. Does anybody have any questions for Chief Barone? No hands. That's it. Thank you for your presentation, Chief. Hey, before you go though, so you're the new, how long have you been the new chief at Niantic Fire Department?
Since September. Don't ask me how long I've been in the fire department.
Well, you've already, you've already said since like 1991 because you were on the committee to buy the last truck. Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate your service. Okay. So if there's no further questions, we'll move on to Department 218, the Flanders Fire Department.
Good evening.
Hi, Chief.
How are you? So most of our, most of, we have really two big increases, that's all. One is overtime. I know last year, the actual overtime for 2020, 21 was 123. You guys cut it down to 89,000, just shy of 90. But when we do their actual numbers, what we reflect on for overtime is one full-timer receives 260 hours scheduled overtime, 108 hours of holiday pay. And then we put in there about 100 hours of unforeseen time. Celebrating line being held over for shifts, other overtime shifts that pop up due to weather. And that's where we, we got that 126085 based upon the contractual numbers and what we foresee. The other one is line 201, which would be telephones. The Flanders Firehouse purchased all the phones from the fire department and the warranty is up and it's about a thousand dollars a year to warranty them and maintain them. And then everything else is a status quo.
And your capital items?
Capital items, we have the five SCBA bottles. I know we put it for four, but I think there's an error on ours. When I printed it out, it says six. Maybe it's four sets of fire gear and then fire hose. So one of the concerns I have right now is I have about 15 new members, so I need gear.
Fifteen new?
New members.
Volunteer members?
Yep.
Yes.
Well, congratulations. How'd, how'd you manage that one?
Going out and seeing all members, talking, getting people involved.
Yeah. Very good. Does anybody have any questions for Chief Taylor? Okay, no questions regarding the operating or capital budget for Flanders Fire Department. Then we shall move on. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Let's move on to Department 224, the Fire Marshal.
Good evening.
Hello, John.
Hey, John.
Hi. I don't know if you have any particular questions. I mean, it's, it's pretty flat from last year's.
Good point.
Anything on capital? There's a $10,000 item in the capital this year. Can you just briefly address that line item?
Camille, that's the, that's acquisition payments on the vehicle that we purchased last year.
Okay. But nothing new.
Nothing new.
On the CIP, was there anything coming up?
Just the Knox boxes. John, if you want to talk about that.
Pardon me, man. What we had to do is we're going through, we're just upgrading the lock cylinders. And just a brief explanation if people don't know what the Knox boxes are. It's a small vault. If you, when you go into the town office building, you'll see a small black box on the wall. Most people don't notice it. It's to provide rapid access for public safety. Get into a building and also we can maintain security afterwards. So we can re-lock the door rather than having to break the door, such as a lot of times the firefighters will have to break a door to gain entry for fire or maybe a gas leak. They could just open the door with a key, go in, do their investigation and then, and then leave and re-secure the building. Same thing with the rest of our, the schools, all the town, most of the town buildings have them. And then also, um, most of our commercial structures have them as well.
Thank you for that explanation. Does anybody have any questions for John? Regarding the Fire Marshal budget? Now I'm seeing no questions. Okay. Thank you very much. We will be moving on to the First Electman's Office, number 101. Thanks, guys.
Be kind.
Good night.
Wow. Get to present a budget. And it's, it's all right in front of you. It's the 255. Tell me, remind me what that is, Anna. The PT Union. Oh, that's the floating position. So we're introducing a floating position into the town hall. We have a desperate need as we try to fill in different. Well, there's always somebody out, right? So we wanted to bring in somebody to cross train and have a position available. We've had, just like all the other departments you've heard of, we've had long-term illnesses and, and health issues. But even someone taking a vacation can leave a significant void in offices to the point where sometimes we're locking doors and citizens are finding, you know, a particular department closed. Timing is sometimes just that. So we're, we're looking to put in, and we've talked about this for a long time, a floater position for the town hall who will be trained and bonded properly to handle a variety of different things. Sometimes just having a warm body, being in an office to answer the phone and take messages and greet customers on, on a busy day where we are also shorthanded will be enough. We also have significant needs during different, different seasons. The Clerk's Department gets very busy at times, but especially Tax Collector's Department takes a lot of payments in person, believe it or not, even still. People will line up down the hallway to take payments and having an extra body would certainly help our customer service. So that's what that's all about. Everything else is pretty flat, as you can see. I'll take questions.
Any questions for the First Electman on his budget? Yes, John?
Mark, on the bottom there, what's the revenue? Detail.
Is that permits, Anna?
Any park fishing leases?
Yeah, the permits, the fishing, fishing licenses. All the, the town docks, the fishing boats. Is what that is.
Okay.
We've increased those significantly based on demand and value. There's three boats down there. The state took one of them back. When they redid the bridge, they discovered we had a town dock under the bridge. That's not allowed. So we have three long-term leases down there.
Any other questions for the First Electman? Yes, Ann Chakel.
Hi, Mark. The person who is in the floating position, how many hours a week is that?
I think the narrative spells it out. Board of Selectmen added this into the budget. That's why it wasn't in my original budget. Employing this position, be trained to work with all departments. This would be a 20-hour per week position within the UPCU bargaining unit, rate beginning at 24.52 an hour. We anticipate this would be a floating schedule, someone with a lot of flexibility. It wouldn't be a standard 20. The person might come in for 40 hours one week for a full, you know, someone being out and maybe another week zero. But we would want to try to find a balance there.
And they would be entitled to like health benefits or anything, correct?
Not at, not at 20 hours. And that's why we'd have to be careful with that. We'd also have to be careful when they do jump up to a full-time hourly thing that we don't do that too much because there are certain standards in the Labor, Labor Department, State of Connecticut that will regulate that. So no, we don't want, we don't want benefits. We don't want paid overtime, paid leave time and certainly not health insurance.
Okay, great. Thank you.
What other solutions were considered rather than adding another permanent position to the town?
What other, well, we've moved several positions in the town. The Clerk's Office used to have three. The, the Tax Collector used to have an additional person as well. So we removed people over time and we're looking to put people back on. This is the solution. This is the way the building is set up and it's all siloed. Be great to have one big office pool and, you know, different departments off of the middle. If I was to say.
So there isn't, right, there isn't any way to hire temporary personnel to fill in for when people are called out sick or suddenly leave?
I wouldn't trust a temp service, not with our tax money, not with the Town Clerk's Department that, you know, is so critical. We're also talking downstairs in the Building Department that, you know, we're talking about permits and fees that are coming in. These people are bonded. They're taking in money. So I think it needs to be one of our own.
But these departments have significantly different responsibilities. Wouldn't it be hard to find a person that ticks every single box?
Yep. That's the challenge.
Okay. Any other questions for the First Electman? If not, we'll move on. Thank you, Mark. We'll move on to the Department 111, Judge of Probey. This typically an allocated percentage, which we have in the detail. I don't know if everybody had a chance to look at that. It's actually gone down this year, but still we'll entertain any questions if there are any. Does anybody have any questions regarding the Judge of Probey? And their budget as submitted? No questions, so that's an easy one. We'll move on. Let's go to Department 115, Services to the Community.
Yes, and you remember last year, we took a significant hit on this on purpose. We cut back wherever we thought we could is, as we were trying to bring in a low, low budget because of the economy and its, its effects on our citizens and the great un- because of the economy and its effects on our citizens and the great unknown last April. So here we are, we're replenishing nonprofits that we had cut in the past. Don't forget the Vets Council had waived their money on purpose because they weren't going to be able to have a Memorial Day parade and celebration, so they, you know, willfully volunteered to be cut. A few other groups did also take it that way, Main Street Program was cut, and they got, they were pinched pretty hard because all their fundraising they do, you know, the Boardwalk 5K that we all participated in, all the other things, all those things were canceled last year. Brian Dago Foundation took it as well. We did add one in, and that is the Southeastern Connecticut Cultural Coalition. They've asked for some funding, it's a worthy organization, they support the arts and culture. They are working with the town in getting us on the tourism map, this arts tourism collaboration that they're working on. And they've also, they're also the group that just sent a petition out to all the towns, that when we get our COVID money, and I know we'll talk in depth about that at some point during your process, that they were asking for one percent of the COVID money to support the arts in our own community. And that's a worthy cause, we'll figure out how to do that. But that's it, we're adding five hundred dollars into a normal flat budget.
So, Mark, who did the vetting for that organization, are they a 501(c)?
They are a state, quasi-state organization. They report to the COG every, every month. Wendy Bury is its chair and president, the person who kind of runs it. So I gotta say, it's not a private organization. I do believe it's a quasi-government organization. They get their funding, I think, from the state.
So this is typically to help fund arts and culture? You're saying it's to get Niantic on the map in terms of
Yeah, they're doing another project with Niantic. You know, we should support them in their supporting us. They're, I can give you more information at some point. Don't go into a lot of detail with this particular budget, but they're, they're a they're a group that supports the arts in our, in our region, and they've asked for every town to support them as, in some fashion, with a nominal fee.
Right, I don't want to spend too much time on it either because it is pretty nominal, but there is a rather large grant being made available. It's called the Shuttered Venue Operators Grant, which is being made available to many cultural art centers. So are you saying that they came before the Board of Selectmen to request money that we're getting, the one point nine?
That's a separate, that's a separate conversation. No, they're asking that we spend, of the money, we spend one percent back in our own town to support the arts. When we're going to be supporting IT and water and sewer infrastructure, and yes, the food lockers and the mental health component and some other outdoor recreation programs, they also want us to focus on the art, it was just a request, but this is the group that does that. Those, that shuttered theater situation is, yes, it's for the guard to apply and hopefully receive money to support the guard and get them back up and running. The Cultural Coalition is far greater than that. It's tourism, it's museums, it's it's advertising, marketing, it's everything, it's everything else, it's also cultural and tourism and you know, our schools.
Yes, Anna?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that they also provided some assistance to the Planning Commission when they were doing the new plan of conservation and development. So that's kind of how they got on our radar, making requests.
Oh, okay, very good, that's good information, thank you. Any, any other questions regarding this department? Yes, and Chikello?
Um, I just wanted to say that the Southeastern Connecticut Cultural Coalition is a 501(c)(3), headquartered in Norwich. I just looked it up.
Oh, thank you, Ann, appreciate that. Really appreciate that quick response. Peter, did you have a question? Peter, you know you're muted, right?
I did not know I was muted, I'm sorry.
Okay, no problem.
Nine oh five, Family Service Association. In a text, it accurately reflects that it's actually the United Community and Family Services, and that line should read, United Community and Family Services. It was a merged agency situation many years ago, and since I was closely affiliated with the Family Service Association, I'm aware of this.
Oh, yeah.
So it, that could read United
It should be, yeah, UCF.
Yes.
Yeah. Agreed, that's old school right there.
It was Family Service Association, they merged, and the Family Service one was the one that was in this area. So just, that's always jumped out at me, so thank you.
So that was line item nine oh five, just a little name change request.
They do provide a lot of services for this town, I
Said, yeah.
Very good, any other questions?
Yeah, just piggybacking on Peter's, the UCFS, I'm assuming that, or maybe I guess the question is, do these people who are getting the services, I mean, do they have like state insurance that UCFS would be paid by? Does anybody know?
Yeah, I, I, actually, I can answer that if you don't mind. A lot of them do have state insurance, which pays about eighty percent of the cost. There's a loss that the agency sustains when there's state insurance. They are also people that do not have insurance, and that's primarily what this money is budgeted for, is people that do not, are not eligible for state insurance or not eligible for Obamacare. And they work on a sliding scale, it's fee out of pocket. So that's, that's primarily what that money's targeted for. I'm sure that if you ask UCFS, we'd give you a much more in-depth
Yeah.
thing, but, but that's, that's what it's for. Not everybody has state insurance who doesn't have commercial insurance. There's a part, don't have any, and that makes them ineligible for a lot of services, so UCFS, one of the agencies that'll pick them up on a sliding fee scale.
Okay, great, thank you, Peter.
Great. If there's no further questions, we can move on to Department 118, the Finance Department. This is Anna's area.
Yeah, so the budget is primarily salaries. The treasurer position is included in this department, that's an elected position. We have a part-time staff accountant that works typically up to eight hours a week, that does all the bank reconciliations and the tax reconciliation from, you know, the Tax Department to what we enter in our general ledger. I have three UPCU Union employees, two of them work full-time at thirty-seven and a half hours a week, and the third works thirty hours a week, so the positions are payroll, accounts receivable, and accounts payable. It's the accounts payable position, that's thirty hours a week. And I do have some, a line item for part-time clerical in the event that we need additional assistance. The other items in the budget are the fee that we pay for annual maintenance on our accounting software, miscellaneous supplies, and then there are some funding for professional development and a transportation allowance. I did cut back on those a little bit as due to COVID, you know, things have more or less been scaled back. Anyone has any questions?
Does anyone have any questions for the Finance Director? Just a quick question, Anna, what are the revenues that you've notated on your departmental budget? Seventy-nine thousand?
Yeah, that's, what goes into that are we receive some revenues for some of the towers that we have throughout town, and they get deposited to that account, and then maybe a couple of other miscellaneous revenues.
So lease revenues for the, for the cell towers?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I was, I didn't know. Okay, there's no further questions for Anna, we can move on to the Board of Finance. So basically, the first line item is for our Recording Secretary. She takes fastidious notes at every meeting, gets them posted to the website in a timely manner. She gets them turned around to us for review. The Audit Services typically is always in our budget, so we just went to negotiate for a new auditor last year, we have a new one, and it is a three-year contract, correct, Anna?
It's three years with an option to renew for two additional years.
Okay, very good. And then we have some miscellaneous printing and supplies expense. So does anybody have any questions about our budget this evening? Any questions at all? Okay. With that, I think we are done. So unless there's any additional questions for Mark or Anna with regard to anything we discussed tonight, or even the CIP chart that we received this evening, then that would conclude our presentations under New Business. Any final questions? Okay, great, hearing none. Is there any board member that would like to make a board comment this evening? Okay, seeing nobody, then would somebody like to make a motion to adjourn this meeting? Thanks, John Birmingham, is there a second?
A second.
Thanks, Ann Chikello, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, thanks everyone, have a good night, we'll see you on Wednesday.